Good evening. I call this meeting of the Lakota Local School District Board of Education on Monday, April 3rd, 2023 to order. Mr. Zink, would you call the roll?
Mr. D.
You.
Ms. Bodie.
Present.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here. Mr. D., would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Board will move to number three on our agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Discussion?
Yes, can we separate, um, sorry, the underneath superintendent recommendations approval from personnel, approved personnel items from the N.C.?
Yes, I'll do that.
Thank you.
No further discussion? Mr. Zink?
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. We'll move to opening comments under Board President comments. We had our first listening session this evening. Thank you to those who came and who spoke this evening and to those who listened. Really appreciated the comments. Board, does anybody have any feedback on that? Mr. Zink? Anything? Mr. Vogelmann?
All of the people that had signed up did have an opportunity. We did have a few that didn't make it, but it did appear from what I watched that it looked like it wasn't as jammed up with registering quickly. So that possibly helped, but I'm sure we'll work through it as we go. Give us a good first one.
Very good. Board, anything?
I have something. I was glad to see the turnout even of those just here to listen and not to speak, but I had a suggestion that maybe the board could consider. Excuse me. When we had people sign up, we only had, Mr. Zink, 12 people sign up? 10 people sign up?
Ten.
10 people sign up and a couple couldn't make it. So we had a lot of time left in between. I was wondering if we might do something like a waiting list. So for instance, if you feel like you want to, well, if you want to speak now, if you feel like you want to, you go ahead and sign up. And even though you're not, there's 50 people signed up and we choose 40 based on time, we could email the people that did not get chosen and say, "You did not get chosen. However, if you're still interested in addressing the board, please come to the listening session." And if we have people that don't show up, we can then plug in people from the waiting list. I don't know, it just might, not that I didn't enjoy talking to people while, in between that time, but it might have given more people an opportunity to speak if we had people that, because if you sign up on Friday, something could come up on Saturday or Sunday and you can't make it or your child's sick. I mean, we all have instances where we have things to do and at the last minute, something comes up. So just a thought.
Are you all anything further?
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes, I agree with you. I think the purpose is to make sure we have the community speak to us freely and in a more conducive atmosphere. So I agree with what you said. I think it's a good idea. And thanks for, to those that participated today. And please let the information go out. We want to hear from the community. And that's why we create that time specially for that. So thank you for coming. We appreciate that.
Anything further?
I appreciated that it was, it felt a little more informal, so we were able to have those good conversations. And with the extended time at 45 minutes, we, with 10 people, we still could have had potentially, even if everyone had come, time for an additional five. So I know there's been some concern that if you're not signing up at 9:00 a.m. on Friday, you won't get an opportunity, but this, if anybody had signed up anytime from 9:00 a.m. Friday to 9:00 a.m. Monday, they would have had the opportunity to speak or at least five more people potentially would have had that opportunity. So it was nice that we were able to accommodate 100% of those interested in speaking.
Very good.
I think this new policy is ridiculous and it shouldn't be this hard to come before the board and speak. No one buys what you're trying to do. And I also think that there was a waste of time between the start to the end, and I think we could be more time efficient if you refuse to accept a normal policy for public comment. Also, I would like to know, with Cherokee redressed, redist, with Cherokee and overcrowded, what are our classroom ratios to teacher in that school?
All of the ratios inside Cherokee are within the board parameters.
So is there overcrowding in Cherokee?
So this was an issue that was brought forward and rather than putting Mr. Vogelmann on the spot, Mr. Vogelmann, perhaps you can come back to us on that issue that was raised during the community listening session?
Absolutely.
Okay. Did you have anything further, Mrs. Bodie?
Yes, I also would like to say that, you know, it was stated that we can't afford to wait. I don't think we can afford to move forward because of, you know, the economy. So I just would like to correct that statement. That's all that I have for right now. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Help me understand how you feel we could have more efficiently used the time between the speakers and the start of this meeting, given the notices?
You know, it's just a ridiculous policy in general and that's my statement. Thank you.
But you stated specifically that we wasted time and it was inefficient. So I'd be curious, your recommendations for how to better utilize that time for future improvement?
My recommendation would be go back to the original policy where we have two 30-minute speaking times and that we allow our student, our community to speak freely and stop trying to limit what people say at the mic. Thank you.
Okay.
Hold on, may I respond? I haven't spoken yet on it, so if you don't mind, I'll do that. And then we're going to move on and get back to our agenda. I just wanted to say that I really feel that our intent here was to allow more participants. So we extended the speaking time. We're adjusting our speaking time for speakers. If we have, for instance, if we have more than 15 that sign up, we'll give two minutes to everyone. If we have less than 15, they'll have three minutes. We want to get as many people into that amount of time as we can. We have lifted restrictions on what people can say, and so it is much more open and I believe that it's an entirely different process than what we've been doing in our public comment sessions. And so I appreciate the time, the effort that's gone into it. There was a lot of research put into it and appreciate that we're trying to offer something more to our community and make sure that we're hearing from as many people as possible. We're going to move on on the agenda, please.
Please.
We will move to, Mr. Vogelmann, your comments.
Yeah, just wanted to comment on the trip, the COSBA trip that we took. Some really good sessions, some of the content that we heard focusing on positivity, making sure that we reframe how we deal with stress. I thought, one of the key notes, Chuck Underwood is his name, did a presentation about generational imperative and how the generations, and he talked about how the, I guess, the viewpoint to the generation changed and he framed it out by years of which generation is which. And it was funny when he was describing each one that people that were in that generation, I heard a couple of amens when they were talking about their generation because he was, and I, a lot of nods, and it's just a very interesting read if you, if you ever check out Chuck Underwood Generational Imperative. I think it kind of helped us understand communication pieces as well. I also went to some sessions with superintendent from Arkansas, superintendent from Tennessee, Florida board members all over, just kind of hear some different things from strategic planning to future-ready leaders, filling your bucket with positivity, communication between community districts. So some good sessions that gave, gave me some good things to think about.
We do have a place, Board, as an aside for Board Professional Development under Board Report, so we'll all have an opportunity to talk about that. Mr. Vogelmann, would you like to talk about, or Mr. Zink, about the changes in our meeting dates for May, just so that we've put that on the record about what we're doing?
Well, we have another public notice that will be coming out. The May 12th committee meetings will be moved to May the 5th. That's to keep us within two weeks within the month instead of three. So that will be coming out, so.
In our second meeting in May?
In the 15th, yeah. The 15th, we plan to cancel that due to the conflict with the Butler Tech graduation.
We actually have four graduations in one week and we had a board meeting in there as well. So it would have been, it would have been a very intense week, so.
And a Butler Tech graduation.
And obviously, several of us attend the Butler Tech graduation and that's an important aspect too, to support those students. Thank you. Mr. Vogelmann, anything else from you?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Zink, anything else?
For my section tonight, we have Ryan Holiday from the State Auditor's Office. He is not able to make it again tonight, but we have a Zoom link sent over, so he is on Zoom. So I'm hoping maybe we can get a picture of Ryan on the screen to talk about our Auditor of State Award. And then we have people from the Treasurer's Office team that came tonight and we'll have them come up into a picture and I'm going to try to not get anxious and make sure I say everybody's name correctly as they're walking up here. So we'll, we'll start with Ryan and then we'll go from there.
Why don't we have your staff come up on stage while we're talking about them?
We could do that, but I want to announce them as they're coming up. So let's, everybody come up first, one by one, so that I can, yeah, that way, I'm going to make this as difficult as possible, I'm sure. Ryan, can you turn your camera on, please?
Where will we see Ryan? Will we see Ryan anywhere?
We're hoping.
I think, uh, I hope he's asked it.
So we have budgetary, we have budgetary director Melissa Harner. Yeah, everybody come this way. Finance director Hannah Songer. Lisa Duckworth in budgetary. Jennifer Shepherd in budgetary. David Skirmiger in payroll. Kelly Harrington in payroll. Rayan Miller in payroll. Stephanie Serrato in the Welcome Center. Luis Rodriguez in the Welcome Center. Paula Heinley in the Welcome Center. And Kimberly Toback in the Welcome Center. And Beth Machad from budgetary. Nicole Berkeley from the Welcome Center. Pam Ziegler from the Welcome Center. Jenny Gents, new to be in benefits. Darian Oskley, Assistant Treasurer. So this is the, a couple people missing, but for the most part, thank you all for coming tonight.
Good evening. Can you hear me tonight?
We can hear you. We cannot see you yet. Todd, are we going to be able to get that or?
Are we going to be able to see?
Ryan, can you turn your camera on?
Yeah, I'm trying to. But I believe that's, yes, do it.
One second. One second. It's been a while since I've had to do this.
Mrs. Betcher, do you?
Okay, try it now.
All right. Well, good evening. It is my honor to present Lakota Local School District and Treasurer Adams Inc. with the Auditor of State Award distinction for the 2022 fiscal year audit period. It is important to note that this award puts Lakota Local School District.
We've lost sound. Hold on, one second, Ryan. We've got your picture now, but we've lost your sound.
You there, Adam?
Well, this is kind of awkward. Bear with us, Ryan.
All right. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? You can now.
All right. Sorry about that. I had a stick, otherwise I wouldn't be there. Well, good evening. It is my honor to present Lakota Local School District and Treasurer Adams Inc. with the Auditor of State Award distinction for the 2022 fiscal year audit period. It is important to note that this award puts Lakota Local School District in a very separate group. Fewer than 400 entities that are audited and eligible for this award. Lakota Local School District has now received this award distinction over seven years in a row. To receive the award, the criteria is complete annual comprehensive financial report within six months of fiscal year-end, have a clean audit with no findings or recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or question costs, and has no other financial concerns. This award represents the hard work of every school district employee who strives each day to achieve accounting excellence. It truly is a team effort. I especially want to recognize Treasurer Adams Inc. for his outstanding leadership, professionalism, and commitment to fiscal integrity. On behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber, I would like to present Treasurer Adams Inc. with the Auditor of State Award with distinction. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ryan. And really, the applause needs to be for the team because without the team, this would be definitely impossible to pull off, as well as all of the staff at Lakota that has a part in this. So thanks to everybody that came tonight and the people that wasn't able to make it.
Lauren, let's step to the signs so that Mrs. Betcher can get a picture of their team.
Where are we going?
Let's step over to the side.
Or have your team come up to the front, maybe? I know. Right there in my palm. So.
Well, Mr. Zink, we set as a goal for you that you'd continue to get that and you only had six months to get there and we appreciate the message of accountability and transparency and fiscal responsibility that sends. Thank you very much and thank you for the hard work and to your team.
Thanks to your team, for sure.
As a, as a correction to Ryan, it is nine years in a row. He said seven, it was nine.
I thought it was nine when he said that.
But that's okay. We weren't going to stop.
The other thing to point out, and if you don't mind, am I, can I? Is that when he said only 4% of people, of, he, government entities, what, it's not just districts, correct?
No, that's correct. It's all government entities in Ohio.
It's all government entities, so only 4% of townships, cities, villages, counties, only 4% get this award.
Medical districts, all that.
Kudos to your team.
And that's, and that's per year. I'd be curious how many others have actually gotten it nine years in a row. I imagine that number is very slim.
I wonder if they have that stat, I could ask.
I know, I'm curious.
Since he's a stat kind of person, we can assume that he will go looking for that information. Right, anything else? Thank you. We'll move to number five, school spotlight, and we'll be looking at the Hopewell ECS, the Bench Project, Adena Elementary, the Family Literacy Night, and Parent Engagement, Lakota Central, and Plains Junior After School Opportunities. Mrs. Betcher?
Wonderful. I was told this could happen, so. Next slide, please.
Technology's not our friend today.
There we go. Good evening. Tonight's first school spotlight shines on Hopewell Early Childhood School. So what started as a project to replace just one bench at Hopewell ECS turned into collecting an actual ton, yes, one whole ton, of plastic lids to replace a grand total of 10 benches at the school. Over the last two years, the Hopewell community made it their mission to collect plastic bottle lids that were then recycled into benches. This resulted in over 2,000 pounds of plastic. Students were tasked with sorting and weighing the lids before turning them over to a company in Indiana that repurposed them into benches. So you can see a lot of the, the work at play there up on the screen. With the support of Hopewell's PTO, the school was able to install 10 benches for the same amount it would cost to order just one at a normal cost. The new additions can be found on the school's playground and its courtyards and other spots around the building. Hopewell is dedicating three of these benches to families and staff members who contributed an enormous amount of time and effort to pull this effort off. Besides the obvious fiscal responsibility that this project demonstrates, it was a great project to bring the Hopewell community together. So for Adena Elementary, there is a literacy team at Adena Elementary that's made up of teachers that are supporting Title I, English as a second language or ESL in reading, as well as the school's innovation specialist. The group recently organized its first family literacy night for all new families to Adena, especially geared at multilingual families. The event was designed with the primary purpose of building stronger school-to-home connections and as a way of improving academic success. About 100 families attended, which they were very happy with. It became more familiar with how to use Home Access Center to review assignments and grades, as well as how to navigate many of the technology tools that their students are using in class on a daily basis. Each family also spent time learning strategies to use at home to improve on their reading and writing skills. While it's too early to measure the academic impact of this event, Adena teachers and administrators say the event created an immeasurable impact on their relationships with parents. For tonight's Spotlight on Plains Junior, we are excited to feature two teachers who are going above and beyond to create meaningful experiences for students and without the normal financial stipend that goes along with that normally. Math teacher Andrew Weest saw so much success in his after-school boys' club that he started at Ridge Junior that he decided to recreate it at Plains after moving there this year. Similarly, seeing the widespread interest among students in the popular Dungeons and Dragons game among students there, science teacher Alec LaMester took it upon himself to create an after-school club that builds community around this shared interest. Together, the groups have engaged close to 50 students this year. Extracurricular activities are an outlet for building positive relationships between students, and we applaud these two educators for going the extra mile to ensure their opportunities that match student interest without the added bonus for themselves. And then finally tonight, for Lakota Central High School being our featured school spotlight, I'd like to call your attention to our newest high school that's designed to provide a truly personalized experience through flexible learning options. Central Principal Kate Joseph is here tonight to share an inside look at the school's unique model and how Student Voice specifically has literally shaped their after-school program offerings this year. So please welcome Kate Joseph.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak and highlight my great kids. Lakota Central, like Lauren said, is Lakota's flexible third option high school. For those of you who don't know, students have the ability to come and get what they need from school. They work with a teacher to get an intensely personal education that really matches exactly what they need. Often, our students are motivated by something in addition to their education, so this could be sports, or travel, or work, or family. Sometimes they're focused on their own medical health. Sometimes they're focused on their own mental health. And so they come and they get educated and then they go about their day and really focus in on what it is that motivates them in addition to education. Central also being a, what I love about Central is that it makes a really big district and oftentimes two really big high schools much smaller and much more focused on the individual and kids really feel seen, as opposed to sometimes that unfortunately, we're big, right? And so that is a really, that's a really great piece of what we've created at Lakota Central. Now, students also still need great experiences at school, right? Connectedness and clubs and ways to work through some real-world learning opportunities as well as build on those skills of a portrait of a graduate. And so I am here to introduce Ryan Eckroth, who has created a science club for us at Lakota Central and then created a science fair, has done multiple fundraisers for, like, for the community, brought in Toys for Tots kind of things, and has just really excelled in his real-world learning thing. So he's going to share with you about the science club. Ryan?
And thank you for having me tonight. So I'm a member of the science fair at Lakota Central and it's, it's a big deal for me because it definitely feels like the science club is a family and we're so motivated to provide a community-driven experience and we strive to make this personal connection between all the students. And Lakota Central is a great school and everybody there feels connected, but the science club helps to make that more attainable for the students that struggle with reaching out and being a part of the community and getting those real-world practices in. And so this year, what we've done is we organized our science fair, and this was our first science fair, and we plan to do it annually. And so what we did, since the science club is a student-led club, we took it and we organized a fair and each student went home, some were in groups and some were not, and they created their own science experiment. And they did that and they created posters and we all had our results that we showed off and it was super cool to see people come in from the community, even people who have nothing to do with the inner workings of the science club come and see that. And it was super satisfying to see all that work pay off. And this year, what we've done too, is we held our, our toy drive, which Ms. Joseph mentioned, and what we did is to emphasize the impact on the environment and raise awareness for recycling. We collected used toys for the organization paws and we donated them and they help with kids with special needs. And that was super cool to see. And what we plan to do in the future is we're working on our garden at the school, trying to make the place look nicer, even nicer than it does already. And so it's a really cool club to see for everybody because it's, regardless of your interest in science, it's been a super, super neat experience and it's brought everybody together and it really is like a family and it's just super cool to see.
Mr. Vogelmann, would you like to lead us off? Wait a minute, Ryan.
Kate? Kate, Ryan, come back.
Don't leave yet.
Yeah, you just stay here. So, thank you both for coming out tonight and willing to share with us. Great that you're taking the leadership in that, bringing people together. A great example of giving kids an opportunity, letting them lead, and then I'm sure, as Ms. Joseph does, setting you up and then stepping back and letting you go, which is a fantastic model. So thank you for coming out, sharing tonight.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mrs. Schaefer?
Or go ahead, Julia. Are we doing, are we going in order?
We're not. Mrs. Schaefer, you want to kick us off?
I just, as I was watching that, you all couldn't see Kate Joseph's face in the background as her student was speaking and the pride that she had on her face. And that's what I love with so many of these opportunities, is how excited our staff gets for the success of their, our students when you find your passion. And I know the data supports that those kids who are involved in extracurricular activities tend to find more success in school. Do you feel like that's what's happened with you, that you've helped, it's helped you find your passion for school through your extracurricular activities?
I definitely think so. I think it's been super beneficial for everyone in the club, not just socially and through that kind of thing, but I think academically, it has given some kids who aren't super interested in the learning part of school, something that they can come and be interested in. And you don't have to be interested in science to be in the science club. And it has helped a lot of people who And it has helped a lot of people who don't have a particular passion for science realize just how much there is to it. And so it's provided a lot of perspective on potential jobs and stuff like that within the field. That's super cool to see.
That's great.
Thank you. Well, again, thank you for coming tonight. And again, Mrs. Joseph, thank you for what you do. I've known you a few years, and you are very, very successful at giving your students the lead and then stepping back and letting them take on the project. Ryan, I wanted to ask you if any of these things that you're involved in, I know we've done this, you've done the science fair and you did the Toys for Tots, and I know Central was very honored to have the ornaments hang on the tree at the White House, has any of the things you're doing extracurricularly sparked a passion on what you want to do in your future?
Yeah, I think that all the extracurriculars that I've been involved in, and whether that's dipping in and out of them or being like something like creating a club like your own, I think it's been super interesting to see because it helps you just get some information on what you want to do. And so I kind of think of it like, almost like an internship where you get to get some experience with that and decide whether you like it or not. And so there have been aspects to science that I had totally ruled out. I was like, I never want to do that. But going into the club and I was able to see, wow, like, this is a lot cooler than I thought it was. So it's definitely given me some more options and things to look into.
Well, that's awesome. Congratulations. That's a great, great thought process of what you're doing, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Ryan, thank you for having the courage to get up here and speak. I know it can be a little nerve-wracking. I wanted to know about your science project. What did you choose?
I thought, I have two dogs, and so what I did was I wanted to see what I could do to encourage my dogs and to see, and so it was super lighthearted. I saw what they would like the best. And so I designed an experiment where I took a bunch of trees and I set up a distance, tried to measure their time, and I saw how fast I have two, one of them's old and one of them's young. And so I wanted to see not only the effects of the age that had on the dogs, but also like, what can we do to motivate them to kind of help them, train them better? And so that way, they can be better for us and we can be better for them.
That's very good. What kind of dogs do you have?
I have two Havenese.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Mr. Zink?
Thank you so much for the courage and your passion. That's why you have, we have a board that supports students' achievement and success in life. And I believe too, your teachers and your motivation, correct? We appreciate that, and thank you. And we look forward to seeing you in the future. I know that the future is really bright for you. So hang in there and keep going. Thank you.
Mr. Zink, anything?
I just want to thank you, like echo everything everyone else has been saying, but thank you for coming up and sharing this because especially from the treasurer's office side, you know, we don't always see the programs the same way a lot of the other people in central office do because we don't have that experience. So I appreciate anytime people come up and show kind of what's going on inside the schools and how it's impacting them. So thank you.
Great comments from my fellow board members and our administrators. It does take a staff member willing to put the time and investment into a student to make this happen, so thank you very much for that. I see Ryan shaking his head in agreement, so thank you for that. Ryan, it takes a lot of initiative, time, and effort to start new programs and try to convince other people to go along with you. So congratulations, and thank you for that. The fact that you're showing that kind of initiative at this age bodes really well for you in the future. And I think the PAWS program was a great program to contribute toward. They do a lot for our families within Lakota. So that and your science project, I think I could use you at my house with my two dogs quite honestly. So anytime you want to pick up some extra homework or something, just let me know. They're 12 years old, and I still think they think they're puppies, so they could use a little bit of extra work. Thank you for everything that you're doing for your school, and thank you both for coming and being with us this evening. We'd like to take a picture with you, Ryan, if we couldn't give you a certificate. Board will move to number six, our board reports. We'll start with A, the Board Policy Committee. Mr. Vogelmann?
Board policy has not met. Plains are for that to take place on May 5.
Thank you. Community Engagement Committee, number B. Mrs. Casper, would you like to start us?
Sure. We have our last DPC meeting of the year Wednesday, so that will be wrapping up the year. We have the Barbasoo Awards on April 26 at West Main Building. It starts with a, like a little mixer, for you all, refreshments at 9:00, and then at 9:30, we will go into the auditorium for the ceremony. For those of you not familiar with Barbasoo, each school picks one volunteer of the year, basically, and then there is a district winner. It started 25, 30 years ago, a long time ago, and so it's a chance for the tremendous amount of volunteers we have in our district to be recognized. So it's always one of my favorite events that we have. The community conversation from last week, as you all know, we had to cancel unfortunately at the last minute due to an illness with our facilitator, has been rescheduled to this Wednesday. The time changed because again, we had to try to fit it in where we could. It's a really busy time of the year. So it will be 7:00 to 8:30 this Wednesday at East Main Campus in the community room. So we hope that you all can make it. We would have liked to have kept it the same day and the same time as what was canceled, but unfortunately, again, this time of the year is super busy and trying to find an available space and fit into everybody's schedule, the facilitator and our administrators. So we look forward to seeing everyone then.
And one further event for community engagement, in a partnership, Lakota, along with C3, the Carrying Community Collaborative, Family and Children First Council, Envision Partnerships, and the Butler County Mental Health and Addiction Recovery Services Board, are hosting a parent webinar on cyber safety. It's called Parenting in a Hyper-Digital Age, and it will be a series of three weeks of webinar for parents, and grandparents and anyone who works with children might be interested. It starts April 20. It will continue April 27 and May 4 from 7:00 to 8:15 in the evening. It's open to anyone, and because it's a webinar, we encourage anyone in the community to join us. And you can register for that at c3ohio.org. And again, that's a partnership, Parenting in a Hyper-Digital Age, and that will be presented by an internet safety expert, Liz Repking from Cyber Safety Consulting. So hope that you'll join us for that, especially as our kids are going to be home for the summer and maybe have a little more online access at home. It's a great opportunity to figure out ways to keep all kids safe, and I believe that it's supposed to be applicable kindergarten through 12, so if there's not an age restriction on it. If you have any further questions about it, please contact me or see me after the meeting. Anything else on community engagement? Mr. Vogelmann?
No, nothing further.
All right. We will move to Butler Tech and Career Development Schools. Mrs. Schaefer?
I have two student success newsletters that I'll pass along. One's February, one's March, so when you're getting two, that's on purpose. There's also to let you, there's every year, there's an all-boards meeting where they showcase the student talent and what they've learned, as well as have a student-led meal, and that will be on May 3 from 4:00 to 8:00 at the Butler Tech campus. They ask that you RSVP by April 18, and you should all have seen an invitation at your seat in order to do that. So an orange envelope should have been waiting for you. At our last meeting, we talked a little bit about QuickBase, which is their systems, which tracks all their numbers, and just how we can get any data that we might need from Butler Tech. In addition, Marnie Durham shared with me that she had specifically talked with Lakota and looks forward to expanding our partnership of how they can meet more of our students' needs, and perhaps we can even work with Central. So they said that they wanted to explore that further with us of how we could partner into the future, which I appreciated. There is a Full Throttle fundraiser. This is something that Butler Tech did last year with their automotive students, and they're doing again. They did a race car that they then get sponsorships on that car, and then they're actually able to use it on the track. So because there was a delay this week at the racetrack, that's pushed us back. So it was originally supposed to be this Saturday night, and now it'll be Saturday, the 22nd. So we look forward to supporting the students of Butler Tech at that. Let's see, continue expansion and talks about Ponham Leap that I keep discussing. That's the expansion of the aviation group in Middletown, and then the advanced manufacturing in Hamilton, and we're looking at how we might partner with the state. And they're now talking about with the Bioscience Building that's here located in Westchester, if there might be an opportunity to get some of the expanded funding from the state to build that out, and looking at Cincinnati State partnering with Butler Tech, and they're hoping that Lakota will be part of that whole arrangement as well. We've been able to expand the Bachelors of Science program with a nursing pathway, so students can start the nursing pathway at Butler Tech and then finish through Cincinnati State. So that'll be a great seamless partnership for our students who are checking that. And right now, with the last enrollment numbers, we have about 1,000 students that we were unable to meet their needs, but we're very hopeful with that with these three expansions that we'll be able to have more success in meeting all of our students' needs going forward once this is all built out. So, any questions?
Yes, I would like to know more about the racetrack event. Can you email me some of that information?
Sure.
That sounds really fun.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Legislative Committee, we'll start with Mr. Zink and Mr. Vogelmann.
Well, we're keeping our eye on House Bill 1. That has implications on our local property taxes, as well as could play into the state funding. So we are definitely keeping an eye on that. Then we also have House Bill 33 that we've had a first look at with the governor's proposal, and we're waiting to see how the next spending budget comes back for us. So keeping an eye on both of them for the financial side.
Yes. Same thing here. House Bill 33 has had six hearings. House Bill 1 has had five at this point. Couple of other ones looking at is the Senate Bill 1 and the sister one is House Bill 12. That's the reform of the Ohio Department of Education, looking at that state board. The House Bill 1 has had four hearings. The Senate Bill's had two. So we'll keep an eye on those, but one, just a side note, is I found interesting on an update as I read here. House Bill 63 was introduced at the end of February, and it's K-12 Conflict Resolution Education that would require public and charter non-public schools to provide conflict resolution instruction to students in grades K through 12, which I found was an interesting ad. Along with, and if Spark students are still here, they may like this one. House Bill 38 is School Mental Health Days that to allow school districts to permit students to take up to three mental health days away from the school year. So we'll see where those go. Those were just interesting ones that kind of caught my eye, and they haven't even had a first read yet, but just some interesting movement there in legislation.
And we need to be clear, that has not passed yet.
Has not passed yet. You cannot, you cannot use those.
Call in tomorrow for their mental health day.
Mrs. Casper and I, as well as Mr. Vogelmann and Mr. Zink, attended an OSBA legislative update on March 19. Would we like to talk about that for a moment? One of the big pieces, we did speak to, or I should say, several legislators came and spoke with us, as well as the governor, and talked about priorities. And the governor talked about his priorities in this upcoming budget, being workforce development and student wellness, additional state school resource officer funding of $194 million. He's very focused on literacy, particularly in curriculum professional development and funding literacy coaches for districts. As Mr. Zink mentioned, the House Bill 1 with the property income tax and how that impacts 920. It was a long day, but it was just full of great information. Somebody else want to weigh in on that? Mrs. Casper?
It was a lot of updates and like Linda said, hearing from legislators and the governor. The fascinating thing to me was when the governor said that he would be putting student wellness for mental health, among other things, in the budget. He said that there had been some pushback, not pushback, but resistance on schools implementing programs like suicide prevention and mental health awareness because they're concerned that in the next biennial budget, that money might not be there. And he said he made a commitment that as long as he is governor, that money will be there, and that he has already had a conversation with the legislators who support that. He really feels that student wellness and mental health is something that schools should really be focusing on. So that was a takeaway for me. And just, you know, you get hearing bill updates, we heard from senators and legislators on both sides of the aisle talking about priorities and how they come to arrive at what gets into the budget, what doesn't get into the budget. So it was, it's really, there seemed to be a lot of collaboration, even with people that agreed to disagree, they were still able to collaborate. So I thought that was...
For the most part.
Impressive.
There was conversation about the backpack, though. Would anyone like to talk about that? And what the different legislators had to say on it?
That's one where they didn't agree to disagree.
They pretty much disagreed.
They pretty much disagreed on that one.
To say, there was, there was conversation about vouchers and accountability measures across the board for both fiscal and performance measures for private charter and public schools, and what did that look like? And were they going to require the private schools to be accountable in the same way that public schools are accountable?
There still seems to be a lot of work done between everyone on that bill that they're trying to iron out, so.
Right. I didn't, I didn't hear agreement necessarily in what direction to go with it.
Correct.
But it does seem that there's going to be something put into place. Other thoughts, gentlemen, on our OSBA conference?
I thought it was nice for Thomas Hall to stop by and George Lang to have lunch with us. That was nice of them to take the time to do that, and then we were able to meet with George in his office afterwards. So that was nice to kind of get to know him a little bit better.
And to share with him what we felt priorities were for the district as well. So I agree with you, that was a good visit. Anything else on the conference? Moving on, Mr. Vogelmann, Mr. D., and I attended the OSB Southwest Regional Conference and represented our district there. I know the rest of our board members went to the chamber and represented our district. The board did receive award for a gold level award for their work in 2022. That's called the A to Z Award. It's only in the Southwest region, and we did receive that. So happy to accept that on behalf of the board. We were also able to prevent the Friends of, present the Friends of Education Award to US Bank for their work on behalf of our district. So that was great to have that recognition for our business partners. Mr. Zink and I took the morning on March 20 and attended public records training together. Would you like to talk about that?
Well, it seemed like there was a lot of interesting topics about the, such a hot topic at Lakota right now. So that's a part of the, it's part of the auditor of state, part of getting the award, the ongoing training that we have to receive so that we can every year have that to check the box, that we've been to record training. So I thought it was a good training. It was at BOA, so it was nice and close for us.
And April 4, that's tomorrow night, I'll be attending the OSB Southwest Regional Committee meeting and chairing that. Was there anything else under legislative? Hearing nothing, we'll move on. Diversity Committee, Mr. Vogelmann?
Yeah, they have not met. I believe their next meeting is also scheduled the same day as policy meeting on May 5.
Madam President?
Mrs. Bodie?
Can you help me understand why we put the different committees on here that have not met? Because it looks like another example of a board not doing their job.
So those committees are on there, so they're... So those committees are on there so they're acknowledged as being the work of the board, and then we talk about when the next meetings will be. So that's just to keep our community informed. They meet quarterly, so they would not be on there every month as a as an activity that we meet in. I do believe the work is being done, but thank you for your comment. Safety Committee number F, Mr. Vogelmann?
Same thing. Have not met, we'll meet on that May 5th date as well.
Thank you. Business Advisory Committee?
Business Advisory, we're in the process of finalizing the committee. Hope to have a first meeting either in May or early June.
Thank you. Board H, Board Professional Development. We have in our policy that when we attend conferences, that we will talk about those conferences. So most of the board, and Mr. Vogelmann and Mr. Zink, attended a conference by COSPA, which is the Consortium of State School Board Associations. Our state made a decision to move away from the National School Board Association last year and to join this organization instead. This was their first inaugural event conference, and let's talk about that for just a moment and what our takeaways were. Would somebody like to start? Mr. Vogelmann, you kind of kicked that off.
I jumped the gun a little bit on everybody on that one.
That's okay, you just whetted the appetite.
So, so, yeah, just some interesting sessions in which it gained some valuable insight from from all over, not just Midwest region. So it was good to hear from people from Arkansas, Tennessee, Florida. We can learn from them how they're running their organizations and the things they're doing in the areas that I earlier mentioned, and then some of the keynote that would get you thinking and processing afterward. And I think the gentleman who did the keynote on the second day, that he he did half of his presentation, he knew he was doing, he said, "I'll finish up across the hall." I think all the other sessions thinned out real quick because they wanted to hear the rest of his his presentation on the generational piece, so.
He was a great speaker.
Yes, he was, and located just just north of here a little bit, Miami, Missburg.
Very good. Others?
Ken Go next. One of the one of the best sessions that I went to was one that was titled, "If You Want to Live the Dream, Build Your Team." It was a leadership, I was going to some leadership trainings at this conference, and we actually implemented one of the things of many that this training showed us. But we did it the budget hearing today with the early childhoods. We had our first budget hearing, and we built spaghetti stick towers to start the budget hearing to kind of lighten the mood before we started the budget hearing with the marshmallow on top. And then we seen who could have could build the tallest tower. One of the things that I got in feedback was they wished they had more time because we only allotted 10 minutes for that. So that was a way that every one of the principals would team up with somebody that was there from central office, which was exact team, treasures office team. And it turned very competitive. So that was a nice way for everybody to kind of work together, and I thought that was fun.
Yeah, I call it foul because he's truly the fiscal officer because he bought cheap tape that wouldn't stick to the spaghetti. So clearly an unfair advantage.
He called you, Mr. Zink.
I know, I can't help it.
So that was geared toward how different personalities and styles work together.
Yep, yep. And so we said there would be an award, so we took down the the tallest height for the group, and then when we're done with all the budget hearings, we'll announce who the overall winner is.
The suspense must be killing this staff, so.
I don't know what the award might be yet. Maybe we'll have to get a trophy or something.
A three pack of cheap tape.
A box of spaghetti.
Yeah.
And a roll of Scotch tape, 3M.
There we go.
But it was, it was a very good training. It was not just that. I mean, that that seems very lighthearted. A lot of it was much more serious than that, obviously. But it was nice to get a step away and get a kind of a reset to realize that we're not alone in some of the issues and topics that we're dealing with, that it's kind of universal right now. So that kind of helps.
Mr. Eddy?
Yeah. Like everyone else, it was very interesting. And to me, the generational strategy is the star for me. I attended the two sessions, and I learned a lot. I also attended how to be an effective and attractive school board member. As a new board member, I need to know how to run meetings and how to communicate and reach out to community members when they need, they don't understand what you do, you have some sessions with them so that they can understand why you make decisions that you make. Another session was on how to to set strategy for your superintendent and how to evaluate your superintendent, their performance. So another is how to select, how to make selections for your superintendent if there's need. And just attended that to see, in fact, in case in the future, there'll be need for that. But one of the ones that really, really struck me was after Parkland school shooting, one of the parents of the the victims came and gave us a presentation. He stressed the importance of having SROs armed in your school building. He gave an account minute by minute of how, within four minutes, 17 people were shot, and his son was one of those that were killed. And he gave, from the data that he gathered and what every school need to do. And when he said that, it struck me because we recently voted to renew the contract for our SROs. And if not for the, for the, my colleagues, the four board members that voted yes, right now, we don't have had SROs in our schools. I can't imagine how our children would be in schools without without security and with nobody watching. Because if we're going to depend on our police, can you imagine within four minutes, police arrived, yet 17 people were shot? I don't know how we can run our schools without SROs. So to me, safety is very important, no matter how much it will cost. Nothing is worth, no amount of money is worth the life of a kid. That really, really resonated with me, and I learned a lot that I believe with time, I'm going to use them in my decision making as we move along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. Mrs. Catherine, Mrs. Schaefer?
I'll go ahead and go since we seem to be going in order. It is always good to be able to hear from other school districts across the country to see, like Mr. Zink said, everybody's facing the same issues. And it's nice to be able to sit down and have a conversation and understand how different schools make different decisions. I sat in a session with somebody from Arkansas, and they said something about getting paid to be a board member. And she looked at me, she said, "You get paid?" And I said, "$125 twice a month, but yes, I guess." And she said, "In Arkansas, we don't get paid anything." And that shocked me, and I was very surprised by that, that there's not, that strictly is a volunteer. I also, it's interesting, the takeaway to me with some of the districts, there is a district in, I believe, Tennessee that has seven board members and 1,200 students. And there's a board in Michigan that, we cover 63 square miles, they cover 800 square miles.
With like 3,000 kids?
With like 3,000 kids, yes. 3,000 kids, 800 square miles because they're very rural. So it's, I liked, you know, people think, oh, you went to Florida. My daughter said, "You don't have a tan." I said, "I spent eight hours in a convention center. I'm not going to have a tan." But you do a lot of walking back and forth to get to different sessions. I think my Apple Watch today thinks I died because I've had over 10,000 steps for four days, and today I didn't charge it, so I don't even have it. But I like the perspective hearing from other districts. And again, the keynote speakers were all really good. I was particularly, no making fun of me, Mr. Vogelmann, I was pretty excited about seeing the last keynote speaker, who was John Quinones from the show What Would You Do? I loved that show. He's an ABC reporter, but he was the the end speaker, and he really resonated with me because he's Mexican-American. He was born in San Antonio. He's a seventh-generation Mexican-American, yet when he was in school, he didn't speak any English when he went to first grade. And so he sat there, and his family was poor and didn't have money for preschool, so he didn't understand anything they were saying, and they didn't speak Spanish. So after two hours, all the kids got up and left, and he lived a half a block from the school, so he went home. And his mother said, "What are you doing here?" And he said, "I like school. It's done. It's only two hours." He didn't realize that they were going out to recess. So he just thought he was done and thought he was, you know, and this is cool, I love school. But one of the things that resonated with me with him was that he went to a teacher, he realized early on about 13 years old that he loved journalism and that he wanted to do that for a living. And he went to a teacher in 13 or 14 and asked, "How can I prepare myself for the SAT or the ACT? I want to be able to get into college." And she said, "Well, that's a fine aspiration, and I will show you how to do that, but you're much better off at maybe going to woodshop or auto mechanics." And he said he was very discouraged until he got to 10th grade, and he had a teacher who believed in him, helped him prep for the ACT, helped him do college applications. And he said, "It was important to me that she met me where I was," which is something I always like to say, we have to meet our students where they are to be able to be successful. And he said it was that one teacher that turned him around, and he now has a 30-year, 40-year career in journalism, and he feels like he is really where he is today because of that one teacher in 10th grade. I think her name was Mrs. Hudson, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know why I'm looking at you. But, so that was the most impressive thing to me, was that how you forget how much our teachers impact our students and their future and how they can, and how sometimes you have to go out, you have to support and go out on a limb and not suggest that just because he's a Mexican-American, he go to auto mechanic school. He said, "I'm a seventh-generation Mexican-American. It's not like I was, my parents weren't born here." He said, "But I still today get looks when I'm on airplanes and I'm in first class." Like, somebody actually said to him on his way to the convention, "What are you doing in the first-class line? You don't belong in first class." So it was things like that that resonated with me. I was very touched by his closing and the and how important that education is to every single student. That was my takeaway. And I love that show, so.
Yeah, he was very impactful in sharing his story. And again, to your point, that what a difference one teacher truly believing in their student can make in their trajectory, not only for them, but he was first generation to go to college. He said, "My parents were always very supportive and valued education, but they were migrant farmers after his dad lost his job as a custodian." So he said, "They could only do so much. They instilled that value in me, but they couldn't execute it. It took that educator to make that difference, despite my parents' best efforts to really value that." I just kind of looked at some of the sessions that I'd sat or that I sat in, and I'm like, I must have liked the word turbulence because I did navigating the turbulence, leading in turbulent times, comprehensive plan for student success. I went to a session on First Amendment rights, take this job and love it. One was about clickbait headlines and bylines.
That was good.
And so there was one that Linda and I went to, I can't remember what it was called, but there was a book about how to be a highly effective board. And Linda had asked Adam to order that for all of us because we thought, based on what we heard in that session, that that would be valuable and something we might be able to spend some time on. And overall, there was a gentleman who, this really resonated with me. He said, "This job is tough and the times are turbulent, but it is your privilege to be serving these children. And if you don't view it as such, you shouldn't be in that job." And at times, it can feel like it's a little challenging, but that was a great reset for me to say it absolutely is my privilege and honor to serve the students and community of Lakota. And I am thankful to be here, and I am thankful to have that honor, and look forward to continuing to serve all of our kids with that privilege.
Thank you all, great comments. And I did attend some of the same as as all of you. And there was a lot of turbulence, there was conflict resolution, I think that was the one, that high conflict resolution that we also attended at the end of the day, where there was inclusive community engagement, safety and security, strategic planning, school law, leadership. And I did really, truly enjoy the generational strategy, Mr. Underwood as well.
That's my stuff.
It was, Julie, you mentioned kind of a reset, and it was a good reset. It was a good reminder of why we do what we do. And as as Mr. Zink said, to be talking about the fact that so many other districts in other states are going through exactly the same thing. Obviously, for that many sessions to say turbulent, there is turbulence in education across the board. And it was a good reminder that we're not in this alone, and we're all trying to do the best thing for our kids. So it was great to get away and really appreciated that opportunity for professional development. And thank you, everybody, for your commitment to doing that. Mrs. Bodie, I know that you are signed up at the end of this month, I think, to go to a conference. Do you want to talk about that for a minute?
I'll talk about it when I go to it and come back.
All right. Go ahead, Mrs.
What did we, I don't remember what we figured out. We have three baby boomers, two millennials, two millennials, and two Gen Xs. Gen X, is that right?
Nope. There's, I think we only have one, whatever you, millennial. We have two.
Gen X.
Three, three Xs and three boomers.
Three baby boomers, yeah. Four, four baby boomers.
And so we've decided we're blaming the millennial for everything, so. He's prepared for it, right, Mr. Zink?
I know, I'm trying.
We don't have a GI or silent.
Yeah. We don't have a, we don't have a top, we don't have a top or a bottom. We don't have a GI generation or the, what's this, which generation called Gen Z?
Yeah.
We don't have any of those.
I am at the top end of the millennium. Millennial spectrum, though.
It was what this gentleman said, he's like, Gen Z is the stupidest named generation ever because it's like they forgot that they didn't name anybody Y.
Yeah, so there's a Z in it, or X in a Z, even though I.
So at any rate, I actually think he's written a book. It would be well worth reading if you're listening to this conversation. He was fascinating. We will move to number seven, unless there's something else under Board Professional Development. All right, we'll move to seven, Administrative Reports.
Once again, the first board meeting every month, I'll do an administrative report. The goal of these reports is to inform the board of specific activities taking place across the district, help the board stakeholders understand the purpose behind these activities, and explain how these activities impact students, staff, and parents. And so tonight's report deals with what's also on the agenda for the first read of the 2024-2025 school year. We work about 16 months in advance. This is not for next school year. The school year for 2324 was approved last June for this upcoming fall. Today, we're talking about the 2425 school year, even though I do have a copy of the 2324 school year. I'll get to that in a bit. The District Parent Council met on Wednesday, February 1st to help design the first draft for the 2425 school year. Parent representatives worked in different teams that represent each of our grade bands, ECS Elementary, junior high and high school teams, as well as our LEA leadership team to review past calendars, the rules surrounding House Bill 25, which is, I'm sorry, House Bill 59, that's been in place to 2015, that deals with some minimum hours that you have to have for your students, and current approved contract language with our LEA, LSSA, along with some calendar practices that we keep in mind when we develop these calendars. Some of those current practices that Lakota uses, and those of you who've been in the district for a while are familiar with these, we usually start off with three teacher workdays at the beginning of August before the students arrive. We put PD days at the end of each of our quarters per our LEA contract agreement. That way, teachers have a day to grade in there. We typically take PD day on election days just to make sure that students are not in the building when we have our community in the building to vote. We typically take a day off before Thanksgiving. That's a conference exchange day, which I'll explain a little bit. And then a second conference exchange day is the Friday before President's Day weekend. That typically have a four-day weekend there in February. We also look at the last day of school being an early release, and considering we try to balance our semesters. One big thing that we've come across over the past couple of years is the importance of trying to end first semester at winter break. And that is for our high school students. And so sometimes it's tough for the parents of our younger children to say, "Why are we starting so early? Why do we start in the middle of August?" Well, it's to ensure, number one, we get first semester done by winter break. Well, it's, it's to ensure, number one, we, we get first semester done by winter break, but you have to try and balance your first semester so you don't have sixty school days in first semester and a hundred and ten in second semester. And so we have secondary classes that are semester-long, so we want to keep those classes about the same, same length. So we strive for that balance. And so what we do is we, we put people in groups and we start asking them, based on those priorities, to kind of start charting out what, what you think the calendar should look like. Requirements from House Bill 59 tell us that grades K through six have to be in school for nine hundred and ten hours. Back before 2015, it was typically like a hundred and eighty days of school or a hundred and seventy-eight days of school, it fluctuated. And so 2015, they went to hours. For our seventh through twelve grades, you have to be in school a minimum of a thousand and one hours. Now, what happens with those hours is if you have a calamity day, or you have a late arrival or early release, or you have exam day where the kids leave halfway through the day, those, you take those hours off. You have to reduce those. And so you can't schedule a school year and say, we're at a thousand and one hours, because then as soon as you lose one hour, you have to make that up somewhere. And so typically, we are well over our hours to give us that cushion. And that's what leads us to about a hundred and seventy-three, a hundred and seventy-four school days typically for, for Lakota. With House Bill 59, you're also able to capture two days of school for your conference nights. We have, typically have four conference nights that are three hours and three hours. And by House Bill 59, you count that as a day. So that's why we have a day off before Thanksgiving and a day off before President's Day weekend, because that's what House Bill 59 allows us to do. And then you're also allowed to count two staff PD days toward that total as well. The one thing you cannot do is you, you have to take off when you're looking at your elementary grades and you figure out, okay, so they're in school for like six hours and thirty-five minutes. But we have to say they're in school for six hours and five minutes, because you can't count lunch. You are allowed to count up to fifteen minutes of recess as part of their instructional day as well. A lot of people have asked, well, does that mean like when the bell rings and the high school kids go from first bell to second bell, you can't count those four minutes? No, that, that's not what it's saying. It's saying from when you start school to when you dismiss school, you count those hours. And that's what you look at to get to your thousand and one hours minimum. And so through all that process, we, we have this first read of the 2024, 2025 calendar before you, based on the process that we've used. And by House Bill 59 rules, it has to go up onto our website for a month to gather feedback from the community. And if we get feedback from the community, that kind of hints at maybe some days we may want to consider looking at shifting around. When I first started as Assistant Superintendent, and we started with this, we didn't start this process through the District Parent Council. We just kind of did it as a committee inside with educators, and then we would send it out to the community. And we would typically get three hundred, four hundred responses from the community. But since we've kind of shifted to the DPC model over the past five years, those comments are now typically around fifty to seventy comments, because we're using the parents in gathering it. And then usually those, those DPC parents then are the voice in the community. So when they hear, why are we starting school on August 15th? Let me tell you why. I was on the committee that helped develop that calendar. Here's why. Here's why we do it this way. Here's why this day is here. What we typically do when we look at the 2024, 2025 calendar, we go back in time to say, okay, when, when did that calendar time match up in the past? Was that 2017 or 2018? To kind of see, when did we start in the past? You know, when January 1st was a Tuesday? Let's take a look at when January 1st was a Tuesday back then and what did that calendar look like? So we try and keep some consistency in there so that we're not going too far one way or the other, so parents kind of have an idea of where we're at. And so I just bring that to you for a first read tonight as a presentation. It'll go on the website starting tomorrow, getting feedback. And then at our May board meeting, bring it back for a second read. If we make any changes, we'll let you know and do it for the second read, so then it'll be approved. The other calendar I have on there is for the next school year, 2324. One thing that Chris Bissarch found out for us as we were dealing with Board of Elections, trying to take a look at when elections were going to happen, we didn't realize that the May primary changes in the year of a presidential election. And so it's not in May, it's in March. And so we had planned for that PD day typically in May, which we started about three years ago, when we realized, hey, you know, we should go ahead and cancel in May, too. We should make that a PD day, because you can never tell if it's going to be a good turnout, big turnout. So it's just safer for the kids just to do that. And so we always knew that was the second Tuesday in May. But now knowing that 2024 is a presidential election year, that primary will be on March 12th. Now, we're going to move what is typically our end-of-the-quarter PD day from March 8th, just push it back to the next Tuesday, the 12th. That, that way, we're not disrupting the calendar. It doesn't need to be approved, because you've already approved the hours. When you approve the calendar, you're approving the hours. You're not necessarily proving that, hey, wait a minute, January 13th is, you're proving that we're going to hit our hours as a requirement, and this is the calendar in which we're going to do it. So, but we want to go ahead and inform everybody at this meeting to say, we're going to move it because of that presidential primary from the 8th to the 12th, and that's it. And that, as minimal of a move as possible. So we'll start to post that as well, make sure that our principals communicate with families as well, that next year's calendar has a slight change from that Friday to the following Tuesday PD day.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vogelmann. Any questions?
I partly feel that we're approving the, the days off as well, not just the hours. Is there a policy that says that we're approving just the hours?
That, that's just what House Bill 59, just make, ensures that we are hitting our hours.
Right.
There's no policy that says that we have to say certain days in advance. We typically put it on a calendar so that people know, so there's no surprises.
All right, thank you. So our families can plan vacations and those kind of things.
Correct.
Daycare, whatever they need to do.
But when you approve the calendar, are you, I'm sorry, I need to understand what Mrs. Bodie, so when you approve the calendar, you're approving all of the breaks, is that what you mean? All of the days off, the?
Right. That's what we're doing.
Yes. That's part of, okay, I didn't understand what you were saying, sorry. Mr. Vogelmann loves the calendar more than any human being I've ever met. Loves the calendar work. And it's interesting to, I did the calendar committee, A, before it was DPC, I was on the internal or the external calendar and during when I was a DPC rep. And it is a fun, fun process, because everybody comes to the table with what they would like on the calendar, and then you start to do that and you realize, oh, wait, no, you count up the days. Now we have fifty-five days in the first semester and twelve in the second. So it's very, it's a very interesting process. And it is interesting the way that we do it now, that it seems to reach more parents and, you know, on the website in question. So thank you for your love of the calendar.
It's more complex than it would seem.
It is more complex than you think, yeah.
Much like policy work, it might be thankless, but it's important work. So thank you, Mr. Vogelmann. We'll move on to number eight, Treasurers' Recommendation Action Items will be, A, approval of board meeting minutes. Mr. Zink, anything on that?
I did not get the March 27th meeting minutes completed in time for the agenda setting, so I went ahead and held on that for the next meeting this month. I'll put it on for then. Either way, I didn't rush it in.
Okay. I'll take a motion for number eight.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Adi.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. We'll move to number nine, Board Superintendent Recommendations. I'll take a motion to approve, A, the personnel items. So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Thank you, Mr. Adi. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
So I was looking through this, this weekend, and I don't know enough about these contracts. I've not been given any time to apprise, to apprise myself responsibly. There has been no time to review performance evaluate, evaluations, and actually, did anyone do evaluations? These procedures are a complete abdication of the Board's responsibilities, and I will not be a part of it. We're supposed to be running a school here, and this is a joke on how it was submitted.
Mr. Vogelmann, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, the, the names before you are presented in line with either the LSSA or the LAA contract, as far as like with our teachers, following the rules for approval for contract is why it's so long that they met their evaluation requirement per OTES that has to be logged into the state. And based on their satisfactory or accomplished rating, then they, they get a contract renewal based on that. So we're following the contract language and we can try and get copies of the contract for you if you feel you need to see those further. But this has been the process that we've used for recent years that I'm aware of.
And who performs evaluations, Mr. Vogelmann?
Those would be the supervisors of those individuals or the principals, if they're in the building.
And administrators are handled by?
Yeah, I, I evaluate all of our building principals, and then our building principals evaluate the assistant principals, and then the principals and the assistant principals evaluate the staff.
By law, in a?
Yeah, you have to be certified to do it.
Per, yes, per the OTES.
Yeah.
It's not our job to look at.
Per LAA contract, which is in line with, with the state of Ohio and using the OTES system. We can't just use our own system and say, yeah, they're good. It has to be logged into the state system.
Right. And the Board does not in any way perform evaluations, except for our two employees.
Treasurer.
Yes. It's a management decision, not a government, governance decision.
Is there anything further on A? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board will look at nine, B and C, approved field trips and approved donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board, we'll go to closing comments. Mr. Zink, we will start with you, and then we'll move to Mr. Vogelmann, and then we'll go this way around the board. Go ahead.
I want to start by thanking all of the team for coming tonight and being recognized for the auditor's state of work, that I really appreciate them taking their time out of their day to do that. Also, when we went to the conference, I appreciate being able to go to a conference with, with everybody, because sometimes there's more than just the trainings that I think that I got to know everybody on. There's some piece of information that probably somebody learned about me and I learned about them, so it's also part of that team building when we go on those also. When we're here in Ohio, we always think how big we are. When we go to the national level, we realize how not big we are. That's also refreshing sometimes to, to know that, you know, when, when you're like, we have seventeen thousand, five hundred kids, and they're like, yeah, we have fifty-five thousand, or five hundred thousand, you know? So it's, it, it helps to gain a lot of perspective, so those are, those are nice experiences. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Vogelmann.
First of all, I want to thank our, our tech team tonight. Fantastic. You guys are doing a great job. Such, such a short turnaround in, in like two meetings, we've kind of got this down pat pretty good. So thank you for, for the work you guys done. I know you've done a lot of work on that. I want to thank all five of, of our board members. You all have been very positive in your feedback and the support you've shown me over these past eleven weeks has been humbling, as I've served in this interim role. When I accepted the interim superintendent position, I truly believe that is the right move for the district, myself professionally and personally, and I was ready to lead our district in this new role. Now, eleven weeks into this role, I think I've determined that I'm better suited for the assistant superintendent role than the superintendent role. I wanted to notify the Board as soon as I could, so I sent them an email earlier today telling them that this was going to be my closing comments. That way, I feel the Board would have sufficient time, hopefully, to begin a search for the next superintendent for Lakota, so that you can start that process here in early spring or early summer, decide if you use a search firm or some other agency that might help with a solid candidate pool. The decision doesn't come easy for me. I've spent quite a bit of time in prayer consulting with trusted family and friends, and to be clear, that this is my choice. This is what I feel I need to do for me. There's been no circumstance, there's been no pressure from anybody to say, we don't want you, or we don't think you can do it. This is based on what I feel I need to do for myself at this point. I've made it very clear that I view this district as my home. I do not wish to leave Lakota. I hope that I've built up enough trust over these past twenty-five years to continue supporting the district in the position of assistant superintendent until my career ends, which is, could be six to seven years, or if the state changes the rules, it might be seventeen years, if they keep changing things. We'll see. Part of me feels like I'm letting people down or disappointing them by not having the desire to be the next superintendent. I feel like I'm letting you, the Board, down. I feel like I'm letting Adam down, the administrators and the staff. But I truly feel I'd be letting the district down if I tried to tough it out. You need someone who has a passion for this job. The position requires someone who's a visionary, a galvanizer, someone with great dedication to looking to new ideas, implementation, and to make those ideas a reality. I apologize. I believe my skillset and strengths are more of a supporter and grinder, someone who can help put these new ideas into practice and support those to get them across the finish line. I fully intend to keep leading and preparing for next school year. I'm not tapping out to go sit on the sideline and watch. I've learned a tremendous amount in these past eleven weeks that will improve my skills as assistant superintendent and help me be a better supporter to the next superintendent, whoever he or she may be. I believe this is the best move for myself and the district, so it is my desire to return to the assistant superintendent role once the new superintendent has been hired, hopefully by the start of the next school year or by January 1st at the latest. Thank you for the opportunity and, and your, your trust in me. I don't take it lightly. And I'm very appreciative of this community, of their positive words to me and their support. I'm not going anywhere. This is still my home. I just feel that for what this district needs, they need someone who can have that vision, who can lead. I enjoy the, someone even said jokingly, I, I kind of like the calendar. It's, it's being a math mind, that's where my thing goes of, you dot the i's, you cross the t's, you checkmark it, and it's happiness when you're done. And that's why I lead the policy meetings, is we talk about, hey, we got to go through these policies. We got, we got to dot the i's, we got to cross the t's, we got to be done. We got to get through this stack of twenty policies, and now they're into place, and now, hey, we're done with that. Let's move forward. That's why I do the alternative school of choices. Go through the thousand alternative school of choice forms. Let's make sure we get this kid over here. That's why we do the ratios, the classroom ratios. We're twenty-five point six, we're twenty-four point eight. And so moving into the superintendent takes you away from that. That's the stuff I enjoy doing, you know? I want to do the stuff I enjoy doing, that I believe, I kind of jokingly said, and some people may not know, I said, hopefully, I'm getting close to achieving that Ron Spurlock status, that we refer to Ron Spurlock, because he was the mayor of Lakota, he was here for many years. But I care about this district and I, and I want it to have the right person for, to take the seat that will take us to where we need to be in the future. And I, I know myself enough of fifty-three years to know where, where my happiness and joy comes from. And if I were to try and tough it out for a multi-year contract as superintendent, I think the district would suffer and I wouldn't last. So that's why, that's why I say that tonight. But still continue to serve until we get to that point and hopefully you see the same performance out of me as you see in those these past eleven weeks, which will continue. So thank you.
Mr. Vogelmann, I'll. I'll give all of the board a, a chance to say something, but I want to say that you are an invaluable asset to this district. And you have truly stepped up into this leadership role through a difficult time and done a tremendous job. And I just want to say thank you to you. Other comments, board?
I have great respect for you, Rob, and I appreciate your decision and I appreciate the heads up. And thank you for stepping into the interim superintendent role.
Thank you.
I don't think anyone has more heart for this district than you do. And I think we've all seen that in your actions, which always speak louder than words. I know you don't enter this lightly and I'm, never feel like you're disappointing us or letting us down. The fact that you are able to see what works for you and balancing that is a tremendous asset and something that many people never achieve in their career and their life. I'm sure you will do a tremendous job working side by side with whomever does step into that role. And I know you will be there to be that supporter and dot their i's and cross their t's for them as they move forward. And I'll say, I also saw the weight of this job on you in those eleven weeks. And from a personal perspective, I don't want anyone to have to carry that much weight. And I look forward to how we can all partner together to make sure whomever does step into that role doesn't have to carry that weight. And to your family who's come to support you at this, these meetings because they know how challenging and hard this has been on you, thank you for standing by him and being that strength for him while he did do his very best for all of our students, so thank you.
She's been by my side for twenty-six years and hopefully we got fifty more to go.
There you go, so thank you to your entire family.
We've known each other a long time. For me, again, the first thing I want to say, to read it what Julie said, don't ever feel like you let us down. You are not an endangered slave in this position. You are a human being and you get to have a right and a say in what you want your life to be like. Personally, I think what you did is a sign of a great leader. You recognize your strengths and your ability and what's important to you and where you feel like you are not the best fit and you stepped up and you said that in front of what will potentially be a hundred thousand community members when they hear this. So don't ever feel like you've let us down. You are an amazing person, a superintendent, but you are a person first. You are a person first and that's what I want everybody to remember. You, in your heart, I know when you stepped up to take this job, I know you wanted it and you wanted it long-term and you thought it's what you wanted. So for you to know that this isn't the fit for you and to step up takes great, great courage, but even better leadership. So I applaud that for you. And again, like Mrs. Schaefer said, I've known you a long time and I saw, I saw what you were going through this the last eleven weeks and it concerned me and I believe we even had a conversation about it. So for, for me, the biggest takeaway is we appreciate you stepping in, doing what you're doing, but don't ever, ever think that you let anybody down because you did the opposite of letting us down. You put yourself in a position to do what's best for this district and I applaud that.
Mr. Adie?
Mr. Vogelmann, thank you so much for being honest. You are a person of integrity to make this decision. My selfish self would have said no, but you know, we have very good partnership and we have talked, we have shared lots and a lot of things that I personally ask you to help me as a new board member and you gave me those support. You didn't let us down. We really appreciate stepping up, the time you stepped up to take this responsibility was the time we need you the most and you did your best. So I will personally say that you're still in the district and you're going to be part and parcel of moving this school district forward, which is the goal that we have. I've seen your, your strength. Student achievement is your strength, I can see that. And I can see you have a lot of interest and passion for it. So thank you for doing this and we're going to continue to, to work together and we appreciate your, your assistance. Thank you.
Your character and integrity continue to shine through, Mr. Vogelmann, and I know you'll continue to lead. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bodie, any other closing comments?
Yes, Adam, congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you.
On your award and also the mention of your outstanding leadership, so good job. I also would like to applaud the after-school activities that we, that they mentioned today. I think those are extremely important to our community. I would also like to have more programs like the literacy night that provide and allow focus on improving our students' grades because I think that's extremely important. I also would like to mention that I, it was reiterated through the legislative update that we obviously need a new governor and our Ohio schools are failing because of him. And the unfortunate and deeply disturbing school shootings prove the fact even more so why we need to allow teachers and administration to arm themselves if they choose to do so, who want to conceal carry. This is physically responsible and more of a deterrent. It also helps save lives. And I would like to encourage the president, who said last year that she would like to start a pilot program of concealed carry at a school. So I would like to hold you to your word and I would like to progress on starting a pilot program of concealed and carry teachers and administration in Lakota.
Mrs. Schaefer?
If anyone has seen me checking my watch during this meeting, my son was competing in a track meet over at East and so congratulations to all the kids who are participating over there. My husband said it was the biggest field of any track meet ever. And I will say, having sat through just the one hundred sprints, I was, I would agree. I didn't make it farther into the events when I was there. East did an excellent job in their production of Grease. I know many of us had the opportunity to see that. And for those who would like to see West's production of Little Mermaid, it is coming up the weekend of the fifteenth and the weekend of the twenty-second, I believe. So I would, hopefully, many people will be able to make it out to see those events. Also, I did not say it during the donations portion, but we had two hundred and five thousand dollars of donations on tonight's agenda. And again, it speaks to the tremendous partnership and sport we receive from our community. So thank you so much for all those donations. And again, I just feel like I need to say once again to Rob, just thank you for being the man that you are.
Again, congratulations, Mr. Zink. You have now had the bar raised and now we will expect this every year, so you might want to get busy on that.
He's a millennial.
He is a millennial, he's on that. But again, your staff, it was amazing. I'm so glad they were all here because we don't get to see them. I mean, unless we run into them in the central office, but we don't get to see them that often. So I was glad that they were here and that they could also be recognized. That's, it must be, I know that a lot of them are like, I don't want to be in the picture, I don't want to stand, but it's nice to be able to recognize them. Mrs. Schaefer talked about Grease, so it was awesome, so I won't reiterate that, but it was just a really good show. But I do want to say, this is very, very thoughtful. Shannon Studer, Shannon Studer, who is the, the office manager here in this building, left at all of our seats little cards that say, do they all say the same thing? Mine says, "You rock." And on the back, she wrote, "Welcome to the East freshman campus. It's my house and I think it's pretty great. Thanks for all you do." This was such a nice gesture. We, we talked, there were some sessions at the conference that I attended that talked about, we don't often get the good stuff. We, you know, we get emails about the bad stuff mostly, which again, we're fine to get those and we know that's part of our job. But every once in a while, it's nice just to be recognized and supported just for, just to have a thank you. So I appreciate that she did that.
Mr. Adie?
All right, thank you. My card from Mrs. Schaefer is, be the reason someone smiles today.
Oh, I like that.
You know the definition of my name? Isaac? Laughter. And that is why I make people laugh all the time. All right, oh, my joke was not even funny. Hey, thank you so much for bringing out your staff today because you are a selfless leader. It's great that you let them know that it is not all about you, but it's a team. And, and as, and as you said, one of the things you learned at the conference is team building and you started with this, that's awesome. To the community, thank you so much for coming out. I want to say to the community that we, the policy that we change on public participation, I want to put more highlight to that so that everybody knows why we do that. It is because we want to hear more from you in a more informal way so that you can express yourself to us. And because of some reasons, we had some limitations, we lifted that limitation. Come and speak to us. Speak to us as board members so that we can work along with what you are thinking and what you have to take this school district to where we want it to be. And that is why we do that. And we also, at the time, I want to express more, there's more time. In, in, instead of limiting you to, to only thirty minutes, we have forty-five minutes. So and that is why, out of order. And that is why this distraction is what is affecting our district. I, I, I'm going to be honest. I realized a lot of things as time went on as I came on the board. And I have decided, I'm going to be on the side of the students, I'm going to be on the side of the teachers, I'm going to be on the side of the taxpayers, I'm going to be on the side of the parents. I have my personal agenda. I will never bring it to this seat. I'm not going to, I'm not here for self-aggrandizement. I don't want anybody to praise me. I don't want any newspaper to carry my name and say, look what Isaac is doing because I believe in community service and I believe in giving back. I don't only give back on this board, I'm on four other boards, three other boards. And I do other things that I give back to the community. Enough of the distraction, enough. Let's focus on our kids, our teachers, and let's move this school district where it need to be. And that is what I want to end with today, thank you.
You're here, Mr. Adie, thank you. This is not the conversation for a safety meeting, but there is a lot of clarification to Mrs. Bodie's comment. My original conversation last year was, is there any benefit to considering our military veterans and having them as volunteers within our buildings? And that is not.
That's not truth.
Has not been researched, it hasn't been looked at or evaluated in any way, shape or form and do not want to be misunderstood on that issue at all. Rob, Adam, thank you for your leadership. You know, spending time with you over the course of this past weekend was, once again, reinforcing to that and where your hearts are and where your goals and your objectives are and it's about our students. And I really appreciated that time with you and with my other board members as well. It was great time to be together. On March sixteenth, we had the Lakota Athletic Hall of Fame, which is always an incredible event. I, I so appreciate that activity because it's the reminder for why we invest what we do in our extracurricular opportunities for kids and some co-curricular as well, whether it's on the athletic field or it's in the band room or it's on the theater stage or it's in student government or whatever it is, those opportunities are places where kids are learning and they're growing leadership skills and skills that they'll need as adults. So it's a great reminder when you see a sixty-year-old man talking about the relationships that he still has with those people, that he, were on his team and how those lessons that he learned made such a huge difference in his career or in his relationships with his family or what he gave back to the community. And just, it's, it's always a little bit of a long night, but it is always time very well invested in hearing those stories and be reminded why we do what we do. And it's not just the classroom, but the rest of it matters as well. Great, great opportunities coming up for seeing student achievement outside of the classroom this month with theater productions happening on both sides of the district, band concerts, wrapping up athletics, so many different things going on. So please take an opportunity, whether you're a part of our internal community as parents or external community, you're welcome at our activities and we would love to see you there. Finally, with Rob's news tonight, board, if you're amenable, what I'd like to do is suggest that we have a meeting in the near future to talk about what our next steps will be as a board for a superintendent search. I'm going to ask Mr. Zink and Mr. Vogelmann if they'll help me do some, I don't know if it'll be an internal search. I don't know if we use outside organizations, but perhaps we can start gathering some bids to see what that would look like, just so we have something to talk about when we meet. So if you're all comfortable with that, we'll do some pre-work to make that conversation go a little bit more effectively and efficiently. I also think it's tremendously important that we gather our community's input in this process prior to taking a serious consideration at anyone. So we'll also be talking with our community engagement committee and how we might go about that. That is generally a part of the process for a superintendent search, but I think there's some several, several steps that we could do some work on to bring back to the board. So we'll be setting that up in the near future. With that, those are all of my comments and thank you, thank you again to those who came out. We appreciate having you here. Thank for, thank you to those who came out for our first community listening session. We appreciate you being there. With that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Adie, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Adie?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, everyone.